Our Heavenly Father, once again, we gather here to do our business of this night in the area. We pray that you give us wisdom and a good business that serves the citizens of this community as well. Again, we thank you for this opportunity to us and the service of this fine community. We ask this thing is in your name, Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mayor, and for the record, Councilmember Obregal will not be present at the meeting, but she is available via phone.
Okay, we're going to go into presentation and proclamations, which is an update on CDBG DR projects. Eric.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Eric Gariel with our Dura Group, formerly LNV. Here to give you a brief update on the Highland-Johnson project, which is one of the several drainage projects with the Hurricane Harvey GLO DR grant. The contractor is Lester Contracting. We were here a couple of weeks ago and we got a, y'all approved a change order for some unforeseen conditions on Johnson Street with the size of pipe and wastewater lines going through the, through the, through the existing storm sewer. They have, first of all, I'll say that they're about 50% complete on the project. They've completed all of the work, which was the drainage, I mean grading on the ditches on Highland. On Thursday, there'll be, that we had a partnership with the San Pat Drainage District, which they had a design to relieve drainage there at that intersection of 1069 and Highland. And we were able to incorporate that portion of their design into this project. And so on Thursday, they will be remobilizing to complete that work or to start on that work. It should take them a few days to, they're installing culverts across FM 1069 so that could alleviate some of that flooding on Highland. They should have the material that was approved in that change order. They went ahead and ordered it right away. They should have that in hand here within the next week. They will then remobilize. We're looking at about three to four weeks of work between the FM 1069 and the Johnson work and for completion. So we're looking at about three to four weeks and then they'll be completing.
Do you have any questions?
No.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, we're going to go to the update on the Campbell Ditch Cleaning Project. Mr. David.
Okay, this isn't a PowerPoint, right? It's, you're going to scroll through it? Right, no, I'm asking, this is not a PowerPoint. Yeah, well, this isn't PowerPoint, this is a PDF style. Oh, you don't, okay, okay, I was just curious. A new approach, so, we have a lot of upcoming in-house projects and this is the first and many that we actually completed. The benefits of having internal staff do some of the work. Of course, it's the visual stuff, it's the bottom line, the savings, the savings. But there's a lot of other reasons why we do it that a lot, that aren't associated with budgetary reasons. Some of the reasons are ownership, you know, you get experience, you get additional skills, and best of all, you give them bragging rights. I think the whole time we're doing the McCambleditch, nobody would stop talking about it. The guys were like, "We did this, you won't believe we did that." We had, we ran into a barrier here, but we found out this, it was, it was great. I loved it. It was fantastic. So, we accomplished what we were hoping to accomplish with that project. So, from here on, I'm going to show you this, the rest of the Campbell Ditch, I'm going to show you some facts and some before and after pictures. Go next one. And I know you guys know where this is at, but for the formality, I'm going to pretend you guys don't know where it's at. So, this is the location, the red line is where the McCambleditch is at in reference to the, to the city. The next one, of course, that's just a zoomed in.
You forgot the red line, oh, there it is.
There it is.
Well, it wasn't in the first one?
Uh-uh, it was there, go back to that one. It's right there.
It's there. You just can't see.
You see it?
It's there. It's there.
Okay. I see a yellow one.
Either way, it's, now you do, okay, so, don't say I didn't forget it, I had it on both sides.
Just excited.
Okay, so the length of this ditch was 1,800 meter feet, plus or minus, about a third of a mile long. And, go next one. And of course, words, pictures are worth a thousand words, I'm not going to speak much on these, I'm just going to let you see the before and after pictures and then I'll continue talking. That one right there is probably the biggest view you can get, that's actually from the highway. So that's what it looked like before and of course, on the right is like before. We were able to save a lot of palm trees, I think we had 16 palm trees, but we had to lose five. Because they were actually in the, if you go back a few slides, Gary, a little bit more. Right, right there, you see those palm trees in the right, they're right in the flow line. So we had to pull those out because they were blocking water, but we did save 11 out of those. And we did do some dredging, so some of the flow line was actually exposed, you can see that island in the middle. So of course, we dug that out, so, of course, on the right, that's with the island removed. And the cost comparison, so we received two bids, one for $306,000, the other one for $212,000. We only had 150,000 allocated for this project. At first, we had originally predicted we're going to, we need about 90,000 to do the project. And drumroll, somebody can do drumroll. The actual cost for the project was $44,000. But out of the $44,000, it wasn't spent in vain because $36,000 of that was by the drum mulcher that we're actually going to use for other ditches. So, the other $8,000 was just a rental of the long reach. We had to get a 60-foot excavator and it was $4,000 a week and we needed it for two weeks to get that cleared up. And of course, that's just kind of like a visual of comparisons, you can have a bar chart. And employees that were involved was Mickey, Saul, Adora, Alex, David, Tyler, and Gabriel. So those are the guys who completed this project. There was no outsourcing, there was no contractor involved, it was literally those group of guys that did it.
You forgot to put your name there as the leader.
No, I only take credit when something goes bad. If something goes good, everybody else takes credit for that.
It looks fabulous.
Well, we're thrilled. Yeah, good job. Good job to all you guys.
Thank you.
I'll let them know.
Thank you very much.
Good job, Eric. Okay, now we're going to go to summary of projected available funding for fiscal year 2022, 2023, including proposed expenditures, Gary Edwards, City Manager, Sandra Garcia, Director of Finance.
Let me go ahead, if I may, Mr. Mayor, if I can kick it off and then Sandra's going to go through a PowerPoint here, which I'll bring up in just a second. But we've been looking at the expenditures to this point and you've been hearing about the expenditures. You've been involved with the expenditures. We've been waiting for a picture of what the revenue is going to look like. And, and that of course leads to a potential tax rate. That's what we're here to talk about today, is the revenue and the anticipated tax rate. We're going to give you some numbers to, to be aware of this evening. We have good news for you. Sandra's been working hard on this, working with the county, and the news is, is what you hope it would be. And also, we have some plans as far as the actual budget and capital expenditures within those budgets to keep, to keep those expenditures under control so that the fund balance, excuse me, the fund balance is controllable. And right now, before any of the, I'm going by memory here, but before any capital items are taken out, right now, everything is left in there and we have a fund balance of like 34%. That's amazing, considering just a few years ago, we were in the single digits. That's before anything is taken out. Everything is left in from the, from the department head request. But we can make it even better and that's what Sandra's going to talk with you about and I'll bring the PowerPoint up now, Sandra.
Thank you. Good evening. Okay, all right, the next slide, this is just, this presentation here, this format is with all the capital items purchases already in the budget. So you see here, general fund, we're going to be drawing down the, if we keep all the items in the fund balance, in the, in the budget, we're going to be drawing down about $700,000 from general fund, which will bring down our, our fund balance to about 34% like Gary said. So, second, this next slide, the next slide talks about what the capital items are. You know, the fund balance is making up about $710,000 of those items, broken down by the departments as follows. Emergency Management, the building here, City Hall, Police Department, Fire Department, Parks and Rec. Parks and Rec is not what we would typically call the Parks and Rec, the Parks and Rec would be the new department that we would create. What we call now the Parks and Rec is what we're going to be calling the mowing department and streets and drainage. So then, we also have Water and Sewer Fund, which is drawing about $178,500 between the meter readers, water distribution, sewer collection, and wastewater treatment plant. Our anticipated revenues, we're projecting are $24 million, our anticipated expenditures are $23,000, $23 million, I'm sorry. We're still going to be seeing a shortfall of revenues of $699,000, almost $700,000 in the general fund, which would bring down the fund balance to 34%. Remember, our, our policy states that we need our fund balance to be at 40%. That's what we've, we've agreed, that's what the council has passed. We're looking at our property tax rate for the upcoming budget. Our current tax rate is 78 cents. We're looking at presenting to City Council a tax rate of 77 cents. It's a lower tax rate and why is that? We had an increase in, in value. We had over $100 million increase in property value. Of that, $21 million, almost $22 million is new value. Everything else is just reappriced value improvements and whatnot. So, we're going to look at the next slide and please, department directors that are in the audience, don't say anything. This is without any capital outlay. We went ahead and took out all the capital outlay from the budget. Anything, what we just saw in the previous slide that everybody was requesting, we took that out. We wanted to see where does our budget look like and where does it stand taking all of that out. Taking all of that out, you see that the fund balance, the general fund is only going to be drawing down less than $5,000. We're going to be looking at a fund balance at about, in the neighborhood, about 42%. All right, so our next slide. Our anticipated revenues are going to stay the same, our anticipated expenditures are going to go down. Where, like I said, we're going to be looking at a fund balance of about 42.61%. In order to cover the, the removal and to do the capital outlay that we are wanting and the departments are needing and requesting, we were, we would probably more than likely need to go out for, for a, a tax note, some kind of financing option available for us. We're looking at an estimated cost roughly right now of about $800, almost $900,000. We're still looking at keeping the tax rate and proposing a tax rate of 77 cents. That would be a tax decrease, a tax rate decrease of about, a little bit over a penny, one penny and, and change. And that's where the budget stands right now. Do you all have any questions? I will say that if we were to propose a, a tax note or something to that effect, this would not have an impact on our, our property tax rate. We would not be increasing the rate, we would be decreasing the rate, even if we were to issue some kind of, some sort of debt to be able to afford the capital items that the departments are needing.
Do you know right now what one cent's generating?
No, but let me see if I can, if I can calculate that real quick.
They're just about the same. You're right.
I'm going to have to get back with you.
That's fine.
I do apologize about that.
Okay.
My number is not coming out to what I wanted to, what I thought it would be.
But we're not approving this tonight.
No, we're not. This is just strictly a presentation, yes, this is just strictly a presentation as to, as to where, to give you an overview of... Yes, the changes in those two, you'll see they're mostly identical and the biggest change is going to be in the water and in the general fund. Because those are the big, those are the two departments that had the capital items that we took out. So we left, and if you look at the expenditures, that's really what's going to change, is going to be your expenditure column from the water and, and the general fund. By taking those two, by taking all those big purchases out to see where we would stand as far as the, and the budget is concerned.
And also, if we could point out that this would be the second year that we've been able to decrease.
Correct.
Last year, we were able to decrease, you were able to decrease, you voted a decrease. And if, when that vote comes up, this is simply a, a proposal that we're looking at at this point. If you go along this route, there'd be a second year of decreasing, decreasing. Uh, for years, the valuations have been very low. That causes the tax rate to be higher. Now the valuations are increasing. A lot of building going on in town, um, and so that is reversing, uh, that low valuation. Uh, that's the reason we are incrementally able to move it downward as far as the tax rate.
We were at seventy-nine cents two years ago. We went to seventy-eight cents and we're hoping to go to seventy-seven cents this coming year. So yes, Mr. Edwards is correct. We were at seventy-nine for a while. Correct. As, as they're, as it's, as we're getting new homes, like this year alone, we had new value of almost twenty-two million dollars of new value. As new value gets added, as people make improvements through the houses and their property values increase, obviously that has a direct correlation as to, as to the tax rate going down.
So, the, on the anticipated expenditures that you took out, are, that we're looking at, that would, so that would mean all of the items that each department had in the,
Correct.
budget process would go...
All the big ticket items, all the capital, not, all the capital items. What we're, what we're thinking, Gary, Mr. Edwards and myself, is not saying no to them, but saying of financing them through a tax note to an instrument that we would pay back in five to seven years at the most, depending on the, on the items that we're looking to purchase. And this, you know, would allow us to be able to do more maybe for the employees or whatever we're gonna do. We're gonna be doing the parks and recs department. This would allow us the flexibility to do that without impacting the taxpayers' pocket because we're not gonna be increasing, even just taking those out and doing financing, we would still be decreasing the tax rate by one cent.
That way we can get everything done that they want.
Yes, that is correct. So everything that they wanted is still there. It's just we're looking of financing it instead of paying it up in cash. That's what we're, it's like buying a car. You buy a car, you finance. And that's what we're proposing. We're proposing to finance it to allow us to use that instrument, that vehicle of doing that so that we could get all that the, the departments need and, and without the impact to the budget and without the impact to the taxpayer as far as the tax rate.
And would you please give us an update, uh, the next time on exactly what each department is getting?
Yes.
That was a couple of months ago that we did.
Yes, I do apologize. I just didn't wanna, you know, bog down.
I agree.
Yeah. Anything else? And I'll get you that one cent. I should know it, but you always ask this question.
We always come to that.
We always get here and, yeah, I should know by now.
Oh, it's okay.
All right, I will do that.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, now we're gonna go to board and commission appointments, which is the board, uh, building board of standards and appeals.
Yes, there's one vacancy on this board. That's due to the resignation of Greg Farrar. And we do have one, um, board application from Dennis Peacock. He's submitted his interest to serving on that board.
I'll make a motion that we approve Mr. Dennis Peacock to the building board of standards and appeals.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, now we're gonna go to the consent agenda. All of the following items on the consent agenda are considered to be routine by the city council and will be enacted with one motion. There will be no separate discussion of this item unless a council member's of request. If discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and will be considered separately.
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda for the regular meeting, uh, six on June twentieth, the special meeting on June twenty-eighth, and the regular meeting on July fifth.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Now we're gonna go to public hearing, so I'm gonna open up a public hearing on case number CC two-two zero seven dash zero two, tabled on seven eighteen, twenty twenty-two, which is public hearing on request submitted by Joseph A. Farah, Farah to abandon a point eighty-seven acre dedicated public right-of-way measuring sixty feet in width and six hundred and thirty feet in length lying south of Highland Avenue between Burton and Danford subdivision, outlot thirty-nine lot four dash A, deep number seven-two-one-one-one-eight, and Burton and Danford subdivision, outlot forty lot one dash A, deep number seven-two-one-one-four-three, San Patricia County, Texas, as depicted in flat of set close, closer and providing for revision of said abandoned area to the abutting properties.
I'm gonna get Jose on the line. He's gonna be available via phone.
He's positive, so he can't be here tonight.
Hello?
Jose?
Yes.
Okay, uh, we got to the, the public hearing item.
Okay, I'm ready.
Okay. Vicky, are you there? Vicky?
Yes, I am.
Okay, all right.
Yes, I am.
Ready? Hi, I'm Laura Harris. I'm the planning technician standing in for Jose because he has tested positive. Uh, this, uh, the applicant is requesting to the city council to abandon the unimproved right-of-way, a section of the unimproved right-of-way of South Ninth Street.
Just a second. Somebody's gotta turn down their speaker.
Jose, Jose, we're gonna need for you to mute. Okay.
Okay. Uh, located south from Highland Avenue, going towards Johnson Avenue, and you see it up there on the location map. Uh, Mr. Farah has indicated that Ninth Street in that location was drawn up when a subdivision project was proposed some years back, but has since been terminated and hence there is no need for the street to be in existence. Mr. Farah also stated that the intention of, their intention was to build a private road in that general location to serve as access for future subdivision of both lots on either side of that right-of-way for future subdivisions. On July twenty-sixth, two thousand twenty-two, the staff conducted, planning staff conducted a meeting of the technical review team to further study the effects of this right-of-way abandonment and of right-of-way abandonment throughout the city as a whole. Um, present in that meeting, uh, for Public Works, it was David Flores and Sid Villarreal, uh, the planning department, Jose and myself, and, uh, Eric Blanchard, chief of police was there also, and Nate Borrego, the fire marshal were present. And it was agreed at that meeting that the city needs to study future street connectivity and utility needs and that the upcoming comprehensive plan that we're planning for later this year will be the opportunity to do that. They also agreed, it was also agreed at that meeting that, uh, in that immediate area, there should be one of the rights of way of paper streets held onto to provide for future utility needs and street connectivity. There are several, uh, right-of-ways, uh, abandoned already in that general area. And I apologize, I did have a PowerPoint with this map to show you and I'm, I, and something happened with the connection to the, the PowerPoint that planning department had, so I'm feeling like a redheaded stepchild here. My PowerPoint was lost. Anyway, we, um, we studied the map showing, you know, what is existing there, um, the right-of-ways that are already abandoned. And, um, this is that general area south of Deberry and north of, uh, Beasley Avenue. Um, it was determined that Twelfth Street, which is, uh, three streets away or three paper streets away, there's nothing out there from Highland, um, between Avenue A and Saunders. It's just one stretch of road that has no north-south connection at all between those two areas. But Twelfth Street, um, is a little farther along developed. Uh, it does have some portions that are already paved and, and developed roads out there. Um, it also has some utilities located on Twelfth Street. Uh, so it was determined that, um, the Twelfth Street could act as and provide the utility connectivity and street circulation connectivity in the area. And three streets of way is Ninth Street, therefore, um, if Ninth Street, um, could be considered for abandonment, um, if the city council so chooses. The public notice was published. Uh, we had one response in favor of the abandonment that, and zero responses i- in opposition to that request. The one response in favor was actually from the property owners on the other side of that right-of-way. So they would be receiving that other side. Thirty feet would go to Mr. Ferris' property and the other half would go to the Harris's property on that side. Staff recommends approval as it does not negatively impact the safety, health, or welfare of the surrounding properties. Uh, council, alternatively, council may deny the request if the city has future plans for building a road within that portion of the Ninth Street right-of-way. Um, they might, they may also deny it based on the street system study of the twenty-eighteen comprehensive plan. Based on recommendations provided, it is expedient to have a major project study of the city's street network rather than a piecemeal approach to determine whether certain unimproved streets will be needed, will be needed or not. Uh, Mr. Farah and also Mr. Harris are available. Um, actually over in this corner of the room here, we have the, uh, the whole entourage, people representing, um, the properties uh, and future subdivision of the properties, I believe is what's represented over there. Uh, so they can, they're here to answer any questions you may have and Jose is also available on the phone for any questions.
I have a question, Laura.
Yes, ma'am.
And Jose. The bottom line is this is city-owned property, correct?
Yes.
There is a value to that property and if we continue to give away property to these property owners, it increases their value to their property and the city loses out on anything. There should be a value for them getting, my opinion, getting that piece of property.
Additional taxes for the property.
Oh, yeah, okay.
So you have Ninth Street, Tenth Street, Eleventh Street, and Twelfth Street. So the only ones we have a right-of-way is at Ninth Street?
Ninth Street and Twelfth Street are, those are the roads that are left with right-of-ways over in that area. There's one little portion of Thirteenth Street, but it doesn't go all the way through to Highland.
Want to also point out that, um, not all staff, uh, agree with that, um, recommendation. For future planning, it may be advisable or wise, if, if the council would agree with that, uh, to, um, have that, uh, available for future planning in that area. There is a large gap there, uh, as far as the potential need for a street there. And if we give that away, it is, uh, or however we dispose of it, it is gone forever at that point.
If, if you do decide to abandon the Ninth Street, then your only option left would be Twelfth Street. Twelfth Street has a right-of-way going all the way through from Highland down to Rhodes. And none of those streets, uh, continue up to Deberry. None of those streets have a right-of-way that continues up to Deberry or continues down to Beasley.
Cause it goes all the way from Whitney, all the way to Avenue A, and there's no other streets that go all the way through from Deberry to Highland.
Yeah.
Except that right-of-way, which is Ninth and Twelfth Street, right?
No, uh, Hot, Ninth Street does not continue up to Deberry. The right-of-way is abandoned north of Highland Avenue.
But, like you said, we have the right-of-way for it, correct?
No. The, um, I wish I had this map to show you.
Yeah, cause I read that somewhere.
Cause I kinda know, I know.
This is a map that shows the circulation in the area. The yellow streets are the ones that are there and the yellow highlighted are the ones that are currently there. And then I have some yellow that are dashed red. That means it's, um, a dirt road out there. It's not paved, but it is.
The only one is Ninth Street. And then you have a little bit of the, I guess, you said now the Twelfth Street.
Actually, Ninth Street is not out there at all yet.
Yeah, cause the Ninth, you can go down Ninth Street.
There's Highland here and Highland is, is, is there all the way through.
So here's Nine.
There's Nine. So the pink represents a paper street.
Doesn't go this way. There's no, there's no.
It's a, it's a right-of-way. It's considered a paper street cause it's on paper only. It is not out there on the ground. So this and this is Ninth Street. There is a little portion of Ninth Street that goes halfway down this block. That's from, from, uh, Johnson South, yeah, half, halfway. Here is Twelfth here. You've got a section of Twelfth here and then you have an unimproved, um, dirt portion of Twelfth that goes halfway up. In order for that to be a road, you would just have to continue this and then pave all of that there. So that, so Twelve, Twelve is...
Could open up between Rhodes and Highland.
This is Thirteenth here and it's not out there. There, and it has no opportunity up here. None of these roads have any opportunity north of Highland there or south of Rhodes either. So your connectivity, uh, at this point, it's, yeah, it's, it's gone. One of the things that was also covered at the meeting and, um, Eric pointed out, um, that if there is a road that only goes like one block, then it's more hampering, right, to go down, let's say, go down Ninth Street farther north and then have to go out and about and around and come back down to catch another portion of Nine because there is no continued connectivity all the way up. So, at least with these, well, this one here, um, it would be two blocks from Highland to Road. These are your only opportunities here. So this, we were thinking Twelfth being halfway between Saunders and Avenue A, you know, could provide that connectivity. It's halfway between these two. But council may decide to additionally have that other one if you plan to develop that as well.
When are we looking at the next study?
When we do the comprehensive plan, we definitely need to have that as part of the, the study on the street connectivity and the utilities and everything for the city as a whole.
Do we have a date on when we look towards that, the comprehensive plan?
Well, it's, it's dependent on the budget right now and, uh, I anticipate it, I anticipate it will be in the budget. But, uh, we, we went out to bid and, um, we did not have the funds, uh, to do the comprehensive plan. So we are increasing those funds for this budget, which is not approved yet. So it's not gonna be until, I would say, optimistically, by the end of this calendar year, more likely first part of, uh, next calendar year for the comprehensive plan.
I'm almost to the point of saying, let's table it until we get a, the comprehensive plan and we know more where, how we're gonna build.
I can, could understand that if you decide, if you decide to do that.
We also have Mr. Farah who, do you have a presentation for them?
I'll just answer any questions.
That's one block before that other subdivision that they wanted to open up between Rhodes and Beasley, right?
Laura?
Here, you wanna look at the map?
The Beesley and they wanted to go Saunders.
Saunders is way down here.
Right here, but they wanted to build that Saunders. Right here, but they wanted to build that subdivision right here over those other houses.
Well, it's going to be, that subdivision's going to be down here, down in this area, not here.
You're talking about the Great Egrid?
Right.
Yeah. They're going to be here and here, these two parcels here. The Great Egrid is right down there.
Yeah, not up here.
Right. Yeah, they're closer to Saunders there. They will, they are proposing going through, so they, they will have some connectivity here from Rhodes to Beasley. They're planning that one road from there to there.
Yeah, that's, yeah, that's over there. Right. Well, it's a public hearing, don't you think?
One of the things that we did recommend was that if you do let this one go, that you do hang on to 12th, that you make that off limits.
If we let one and then everybody else is going to let this one go.
Right.
So let's wait for the comprehensive plan.
Exactly.
Before we do.
I think so.
How do you feel about that, Karen?
Well, I was going to ask Mr. Farah.
Yeah, what do y'all guys, if you could come speak, tell us your plans and what y'all plan on doing out there?
My brother, we have four problems. My brother is, wherever the, that yellow mark is your proposed 9th, that adds 640 feet to the, man, it sounds so crazy sound. It adds 640 feet, so you still have 640 more feet to get for Johnson. Basically, any PD, fire, ambulance response, whether it's going down Johnson Ave. or Highland Ave., they have to come from Saunders or they have to come from A. South 9th Street isn't going to shorten any sort of emergency response anywhere unless somebody wants to drive down Highland, make a left, go on South 9th, and go to Johnson, where they can just say on A or Saunders and just get to that same street. I'm not saying that you guys are invaliding what you're doing here, I'm just saying that this was planned to be a neighborhood at one time. And then that person abandoned this idea of a neighborhood and sold these lots individually. So my brother has one, I have one, George, Clark George has one, and David Harris has one. This land on this proposed neighborhood is dedicated to the city of Aransas Pass for the future of South 9th Street. We'll buy it back. Or, you know, we're not, we're not asking you to just give it back, we'll, we'll buy it back if you want. The fact is, is that we want to put, we have our four houses that we're wanting to put. We are thinking of later 10, 12 years of adding or bringing family or trying to look at a different option, but at this moment, it's our four properties that we're looking to just, if you guys keep the 9th Street, we keep the 9th Street and we got to deal with it. But if not, you know, we would like the original lot sizes, each lot was sold at 150 feet. When that, when that lot was originally bought, each lot size was 165 across. Then they dedicated the land to y'all, which knocked every lot size to 150 feet. All we're asking is to bring it back to its original plan when it was purchased. If you guys are planning to do 9th Street, then you guys are planning to do 9th Street. But if you're not, we're requesting that we get the land back. That's all. Because either way, unless the chief or fire department can tell me any different, emergency response has to respond down Highland and Johnson anyway, because both of them are cut off that long distance anyway between Saunders and Avenue A. That's really all I got to say is, we're, we're looking to just put the lots back to where they were when they were purchased. That's all. You know, it's all in y'all's hands. We're, I'm hoping to increase your budget of, of your property taxes. That's what we're hoping to do, and that's what we're asking y'all to do. I understand not everybody's on board, but, you know.
So on your deed on your property, it's 165, what?
150.
150, okay.
But if we were to get this back originally how it was sold or, or purchased from the guy who we bought it from, it would move the four lots to 165 across each. Right now, I had a building meeting today and they asked me where I wanted to put the house, and I said, I don't know, because either my lot's going to be 165 across or it's going to be 150 across. So as soon as I find out from city council, I'll tell you where to put the house. So whatever you guys decide, I'll tell my guy where to put the house. That's, that's about it. The presentation of the future, I can't tell you what the future is right now, I just know the four of us are wanting to get a house down here within the next two years for four houses. And, you know, hopefully later, we're, you know, we don't know where it's going to go, but we don't want to just have four houses in that area. But I think right now going any, we're just speculating on a future here. So that, if there's any other questions.
So it would be 30 feet additional, because the right-of-way is 60 feet, so 30 would go your side and 30 would go his side.
Right, but what we were going to do, since it's four lots, we were going to give 15, and then 15 for that third, you'll need some. So everybody's 150 lot, now we're going to 165.
Makes sense.
I'm good with it.
Yeah, I'm fine with it. Yeah, I'm okay with that. You need to close the public hearing. Yeah. But there needs to be specific to the county. You need to close the public hearing.
Any other questions? I declare this public hearing closed, and we're going to go to Consider An Act on Ordinance Abandoning a .87-acre Dedicated Public Right-of-Way Measuring 60 Feet in Width and 630 Feet in Length and Lying South of Highland Avenue Between Burton and Danforth Subdivision, Outlot 39, Lot 4-A, Deed Number 721118, and Burton and Danforth Subdivision, Outlot 40, Lot 1-A, Deed Number 721143, San Patricio County, Texas, as depicted in plat of said closure and providing for revisions of said abandoned area to the abutting properties.
I move to abandon a 0.87-acre Dedicated Public Right-of-Way Measuring 60 Feet in Width and 630 Feet in Length, lying south of Highland Avenue Between Burton and Danforth Subdivision, Outlot 39, Lot 4-A, Deed Number 721118, and Burton and Danforth Subdivision, Outlot 40, Lot 1-A, Deed Number 721143, San Patricio County, Texas, as depicted in plat of said closure and providing for reversion of said abandoned area to the abutting properties.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Now, we're going to go to City Manager, which is considering an act on approving a community and public relations employment contract between the city of Aransas Pass, the Aransas Pass Independent School District and the Aransas Pass Chamber of Commerce with Roland Rodriguez for public relations services beginning September 1st, 2022.
Mr. Mayor and Council, this item has been with us for, oh, I guess we're going on the third year now. And the first year, we shared the cost with Bill Denton, the city did, and he assisted with the, with the cost of the, of this particular person who does PR for the city, also the school district, also the chamber. And the cost for this person is divided amongst those three entities. And we began with a cost to the city of a little over 18,000. And again, the first year, Denton carried that, carried part of that. We carried the other half of our share. And then last year, we carried the entire share of our share. There was no assistance. Of course, the school district and the chamber carried their share also. This year, we're asking for an increase for payment to the PR person, Mr. Roland Rodriguez, and that takes us up to $20,333 for our share. And each entity will be paying the same amount for a total of about $61,000. We use this person quite a bit. I know the school district uses this person extensively, as well as the chamber. And it's been a partnership between three, those three entities, if you agree to move forward with it.
I think he's done an excellent job.
I agree.
With his PR work for all, for the entire city, he's doing.
He won't stop.
No, he's, he's.
He's even making people dance.
Yes. But yeah, I think he's doing an excellent job.
I do too. I will make a motion that we approve a community and public relations employment contract between the city of Aransas Pass, Aransas Pass Independent School District, and the Aransas Pass Chamber of Commerce with Roland Rodriguez for public relations services beginning September 1, 2022, our share being $20,333.33.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye. Now, we're going to go to Community Enrichment, which is considering an act on the insurance
of a request for proposals for the 2023 Independence Celebration Firework Display to be held at Con Brown Harbor.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. After completing our Independence Day celebration for this past year, 2022, and speaking with a variety of pyrotechnic professionals, I determined that it's a lot more advantageous if we go out for proposals or start that process earlier rather than immediately before the celebrations. This does allow us to have a little bit more opportunity and availability for those professionals to be able to bid. The reality is, they are booking their shows at minimum a year out, and so they're limited on the days of availability, and can they even submit a proposal for our city? And on what days are we allowed to do or available to have our show? So this is just the standard RFP for the fireworks show as opposed to doing it in the spring prior to the show, we would be doing it now.
Smart.
Yeah.
Smart.
Everybody okay?
Yeah. Then I make a motion that we go out for RFP for the 2023 Independence Celebration Fireworks Display to be held at Con Brown Harbor.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Now, we're going to go to Development Services, which is considering an act on awarding the request for proposals to Gerra Underground LLC for the Colonial Wastewater Line Project in a total amount of 1 million, $1,191,014.06.
And so July 7th, the city of Aransas Pass opened up sealed bids for what is known for the Sherwood Forest Edition. This project actually covers Sherwood Forest, Oak Lane, Owens Lane, Benoy Lane, Denipad, and Marshall Lane. This, this bid package was structured with a base bid with an alternate one and alternate two. So right now, we're recommending to approve the base bid and alternate one and alternate two. The reason alternate two is not in there because we're requesting for the public works to do that in-house. So public works, the alternate two did come out to $483,733.64, and public works is estimated to do it for $283,000, basically $200,000 less on the alternate one. But for your approval, it's for alternate, it's base bid and alternate one.
Do we have any idea how many people might actually tie into these utilities once they get put out there?
Yes, a general idea based on a survey that, that was taken as required by CDBG. And as you know, CDBG, we no longer qualify for that because the number of people who requested to be tied into it, that number decreased. They decided they did not want to, they did not want that service. But we're probably talking, David, we're probably talking somewhere in the area of 10 approximately, or is it less than that?
No, I would say about that. I was going to see if I can actually pull up the plans, because the plans, it tells us how many short and long runs we're going to run, have, but I'm not sure if I can get it under pressure right now. Now, give me, give me a second, hold on.
But of course, taking the line, while he's looking it up, taking the line to that area has the potential for opening up other potential development in the future also. Whenever you take lines out, that may open additional.
And it will increase the value of that property by having city services there.
Significantly.
Yeah, so it will definitely help the property owners.
And a lot of times, a lot of the property owners say no, and then when they see it come through, they go like, oh, yeah.
Absolutely correct.
Yep.
See, we didn't have so many projects going on right now. I'll just pull up real quick, but we have like 10 of them, so I have to go through.
Well, the potential for them to try into it is going to be there?
Yes.
I think that's great.
Yes, it only improves.
Overdue.
Yeah, it improves the area.
Okay, I actually found it. I actually found it, so it's 9, 16, that's 15, 16, 17, 18, 19, 20, 31, 22, 23, 24, but potentially 24.
24?
Yeah, they can potentially, we're, we're just going to provide a stubout for them, and they can potentially tie into that if they choose to. But at least we will provide the service for them.
Yeah. And properties come and go with ownership and.
That's correct.
Yeah.
And they can choose not to tie into it, but we did provide the service for them.
Exactly. Perfect. I make a motion to award the RFP to Gerra Underground LLC for the Colonial Wastewater Line Project in the total amount of $1,191,014.06, base bid plus additive alternate number one.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye. No.
Also, keep in mind that we're required to do this.
Exactly.
We're required to do it to be able to keep that in excess.
That's correct.
Okay, now, we're going to go to the finance, which is considering an act and.
Did you vote on that item?
Did you vote?
Yes.
Okay, we're going to go to considering an act on ordinance amending the drought contingency plan, establishing criteria for water restriction for stage two and providing severability in an effective date.
Hi, again. Okay. When we were reviewing our drought plan for stage two, we realized, actually, Mary realized that I had omitted a word, you know, there's something about omitting, on section A, I had it, it reads once per week, and it should read once every other week. So that's what we're here to correct tonight on page nine, on page eight. No, it's still down, so.
Make a motion to amend the drought contingency plan, establishing criteria for water restrictions for stage two and providing severability in an effective date.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Now, we're going to go to public safety, which is considering an act on approving the chief of police to enter into an agreement with Flock Safety for the purchase of an auto theft prevention LPR system using grant awarded funds.
Thank you, Mayor and Council, and this is coming back to you. We did receive the auto theft grant from the state. The grant amount is $20,000, and our amount would be the overage from that, which comes out to about $5,600, which we will pull from one of the asset forfeiture accounts to implement this program. That will give us eight cameras that will be stationarily placed along some right-of-ways and assist with auto theft and other types of investigations. I do have Dale here from Flock Safety, if there are any questions about the program or the product that he'll be providing. Going into year two, we will have to fund that ourselves, but we have adequate funding through the asset forfeiture programs to carry that through year two. Then on year three, we can evaluate the program, whether we want to continue with it or not. And I could also try to pull another grant to sustain it.
So the $20,000, that's going to be for year two, plus the?
That's year one.
Okay. Okay.
And that's coming out of the grant.
And then the city is the fifty-six hundred.
Yes.
What is it gonna be for year two?
For year two, I believe it's gonna be the twenty thousand dollars because we're not gonna have the installation fee or the setup permits that are required along the text out right away.
Okay, so it'll be just the fifty-six hundred, less the-
No, the twenty thousand.
Right, less the fifty-six hundred that we paid in year one.
That's correct. And these programs, from talking with Dale and other communities like the City of Katy, the municipality apparently started it off there, correct me if I'm wrong, Dale? And it blossomed. The community loved it and they started implementing it through HOAs and, and other groups started putting up their own cameras to where they went from a few to like well over sixty or something in that community. And it's, it's been a vital thing. And they use it for other things. It, it's helped because it will give, if you have it around the schools, it'll alert you when a sex offender is loitering or lingering around that school. If you're having issues with catalytic converter thefts, which we are, it's like a statewide problem right now. This has been instrumental in the Houston area in helping them because they have violent catalytic converter thieves over there. They're actually killing people to steal those devices, so.
I'll make a motion that we approve the chief of police to enter into an agreement with Flock Safety for the purchase of an auto theft prevention LPR system using grant awarded funds.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We're gonna go to city council or staff announcement? And I wanna make one. Here we go. As your mayor, it is clear to me that some recent matters we're dealing with has some of us divided, especially the recent activities related to the fire code business inspections. As a council, we serve the greater good of our entire community, not one entity or group within it. We're responsible for giving city staff direction in how they operate and the service they provide. Although it is fine to disagree with the policies, it must be done in a way that is productive and not self-serving. Recent staff activities have been carried as directed and presented to the city code, which both current and past city councils have legislated. It is our responsibility to support our city staff as they carry out our charge. However, in the event trends and desires of our communities change, we must, must utilize the legislative body to change the course, direction, and provide a new one to staff. Rather than speaking out publicly against staff for doing as we have directed, we must come to this table and debate the direction we've given them and correct it as needed. Doing otherwise will only continue to fragment and dismantle the many years of progress we realized recently. So there we go, Gary.
If I may go on with the other items, Mr. Mayor?
Sure.
We have a work session coming up on August twenty-second for your calendar. The agenda item, citizen request by Elise Chacon regarding planning and zoning commission appeal fee. Also, agenda item, citizen request by Elise Chacon regarding NFIP violations and berm removal. And agenda item, citizen request by Alex Sanchez for an AEP light at North Railroad Street and citywide unification project, something we've been having to put back for several meetings here. Those, as of this moment, those are the items for the work session. As you know, that's fluid and we can add to it or take away from it.
I'd like to add one. What we were talking about earlier, about on the workshop, having executive sessions moved back like into the break room. We used to have it so that citizens can remain inside instead of going out in the heat for future meetings.
Sure.
Okay, we can talk about it if the council agrees, that work session.
That's the way we used to do it.
So Mayor, I'm hearing that we'll put that on the agenda also.
Okay, now, we're gonna go to citizen comments. Citizen comments are intended for the matter that are not scheduled on the agenda. Please limit your comments to three minutes or state your name and address for the record. Be advised that the Texas Open Meeting Act provides the city council for responding, discussing your comments. The law authorizes the following. Make a statement of factual information, recite existing policy. Advice that this subject may be placed on the agenda for a subsequent meeting.
According to the water things, are you gonna put out signs that we can put on our fence? The water was, well water?
Are you talking about the contingency plan?
Yes.
You want signs to put on your fence?
Yeah, so I don't, people don't come by and do this or shoot me the finger because I'm watering my yard?
We did that the last time, Gary.
Yes.
Do you need to register with public works?
Go ahead.
I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
You would need to register with public works. There's a warrant to register your water well and then we'll give you the site to plug.
If I register my water well, would y'all, y'all try to charge me money for it?
No.
Okay. The water, out, out to his place? Or you?
Yeah.
All right, I'll come see you.
All right.
And also, they done a good job of cleaning that ditch on McCamber Street. Looks pretty good.
Yeah, it does.
Pretty good.
It's okay.
I know y'all know me because I come here and complain about it all, all the time. Jason Falwell, Texas Strong Fitness, three fifty South Houston. You guys sent me an email from TDRL, which is where John Gomez got his electrical certification, not inspector certification. I emailed that school and talked to his boss and he agreed with me. Texas.gov, which is law, you should know it, lady. Texas Electrical Safety and License Act thirteen oh five zero zero two, the definition of an electrical inspector. Pay attention. Electrical inspector means a person certified by International Association of Electrical Inspectors or International Code of Counsel, meaning he has to be certified, law. With that said, they do that to keep people like you trustworthy. But I'm gonna keep going because I'm not done with John here. Let's go to your National Electrical Code that you adopted, eighty point twenty-seven. All electrical inspectors shall be certified by a national recognized inspector certification program. Meaning if you gave anybody a citation over electrical, it's illegal. And y'all know it. No person shall be employed as an electrical inspector unless they are certified, law. Why is he working? Go ahead, he's your brother. I didn't think so. Let's keep going on electrical codes because your own electrical codes? You should know this. Electrical inspection, office created, appointed, police powers. You know what that means? John Gomez can arrest you and that's in your book. Let's keep going, I'm not done. Let's talk about the agenda notice you have on the top of your page. That is against my First Amendment rights and everybody's in here. She should know that, shame on y'all. Whew, First Amendment rights. I can threaten your character, curse, attack, as long as I'm not threatening you or being obscene. There was, you put on curse words. You can curse all day in this meeting if you want to. It's freedom, it's America. Your illegal agenda notice can kiss my ass. Welcome to America. Whew, you're not, you do not respect your own policies, the law, or our freedoms. Your tyranny towards our constitution, we have, our forefathers would've came right to your house with muskets and ropes for what you're doing to us. Shame on y'all. Y'all have forgotten who we the people are. It is past time that you, maybe say, Jason, get out of here. Y'all are worthless POSs, every single one of y'all. Y'all don't belong in this city. Y'all are part of our nation and this town. Let's talk about the knockbox from this dumbass back here. Chief Kelly's business was grandfathered in, as per y'all's email, even though our business was the same here and y'all been harassing me for three years over a knockbox. So he changed his mind and made up codes. And what did he say now, Kelly? Come on, Kelly, talk to me. I didn't think so. He said now that his belly doesn't have a new occupancy permit, so he doesn't have to have a knockbox. Then how is his business open, Jason, if he don't have an occupancy permit? You tell me, brother. I'm not done. Let's talk about IBC, last subject. IBC, International Building Code, one 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 four, unlawful acts. It is an unlawful act to have a building occupied without a permit. Please, give that man a misdemeanor or arrest him and do your goddamn job. Jason Falwell. No comments? Because you are not talking, that little loophole you do is BS.
That's enough.
I didn't think so. It's enough from y'all, or it is? I've had enough. I did hire an attorney and I do have Texas Rangers coming after your ass, boy, and you.
Bye. Anybody else? Okay, we're gonna go to consecutive session, which is section five five one dot zero seven one of the Texas Open Meeting Act to meet with his attorney to seek legal advice on a matter in which the duty of the attorney to the city council under the Texas disciplinary rules of professional conduct of the state law of Texas clearly conflicts with the Texas Open Meeting Act as related to Con Brown Harbor lease, Redfish Bay Mothouse, and Micro whatever Technologies Incorporated. And it is six thirty-seven.
We're going to reconvene in open session to consider and take action, if any, on any item discussed in executive session in the 7:10.
No action taken. I make a motion that we adjourn.
I'll second.
Autumn Flaber?
Yes.